Good evening, and I would like to bring the Board of Selectmen's meeting for January 13th, 2022 to order for the town of Stockbridge. First on the agenda this evening, we have a hearing for review and approval for application for Roaring LLC, doing business as Red Lion Inn located at 30 Main Street, requesting a change of manager, change of officers, change of ownership interest, and management agreement. So, do we need to discuss the most recent change? Apparently, there was something that was added to their changes.
The reason why this is back in front of you is that because when there's a change of ownership, it has to be a posted meeting in the paper. So, we have to post it in the paper to then hold this.
Okay.
Other than that, that just means that there's a change within their leadership structure, and this sends it to the ABCC, who will then do the investigation, which is step two. And then step three, it comes back to this board for approval.
Do we have any representative of Roaring LLC, Red Lion Inn here, who would like to make a comment this evening?
Good evening. This is Rebecca Wyman. I'm the Corporate Operations Manager for Main Street Hospitality, which operates the Red Lion Inn on behalf of Roaring LLC. So, I'm happy to answer any questions related to the application, if any of the select people have them.
Any questions, Chuck? Any questions, Patrick?
Can you just summarize the changes?
It primarily is an update to outdated records. There were family members as well as corporations which were listed as owners or officers that are either no longer with us or no longer in existence. So, it was cleanup from those residuals. And then the management agreement was done because Roaring LLC has a management agreement with Main Street for operations, so it's adding that onto the liquor license, which had not been done previously.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Do we have any questions from the public? Okay, hearing none. Do we have a motion? Would you like to make a motion?
We'll make a motion to proceed to accept this and pass it on to the ABC.
Okay, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a hearing for review and approval for reconsideration of the Stockbridge Golf Club application for change of manager and change of officers. Again, do we have anyone here representing the Stockbridge Golf Club who'd like to make a statement? Okay, and this is pretty much an annual event, and the officers, that information is passed on on an annual basis. So, I move that we approve this certification.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Next up, we have a special permit public hearing to consider the application of Matthew Darris and Shanny Porres, property at 8 Mackinac Terrace, amended application to the special permit which we granted on December 2nd, 2021.
I'll vote for open the hearing. It's still same process.
Okay, sorry. So, I move that we open the hearing.
Aye, Chuck.
Aye, Roxanne.
Aye, Patrick.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your time. My name is Brent White from White Engineering on behalf of the applicant. And joining us this evening is Attorney General Andrew Housever, as well as the applicant Matthew Darris and Shanny Porres, who are joining us via Zoom as well. As stated, this is a request to amend the special permit that was granted in December of 2021, specifically, I've not received a special permit and further consideration with the applicant. You may recall the outstanding question when we first submitted the application to what with respect to building height, specifically, the peak of the height of the half-story and the lower-level basement that would also serve as a garage. After understanding the interpretation of the height definition of the bylaw that the Board gave us at the last hearing, and further consideration of the desires of the House itself, we have submitted for you all an amended special permit application. Site plan itself has not changed. The footprint of the House has not changed. So, everything with respect to setbacks that was stated during the last hearing remains intact. Really, what we're asking the Board to do this evening is to approve an updated house plan. And I have an elevation view that's visible for you here. And ultimately, what we've done to bring the proposed structure into compliance with the height definition of the Stockbridge zoning by law, while allowing the homeowner to maintain a garage at the lower level, we did a number of things. The first was we reduced the interior height of the basement by a foot. We reduced the second floor height by four inches. And the most significant change that we made was with respect to the peak of the roof originally, that was a 12-on-12 peak, so it was going much higher into the air. That's been reduced to a 6-by-12 pitch, drastically reducing the height and bringing the peak of the roof down to the adjacent grade beside the garage to less than 35 feet in compliance with your bylaw. We're certainly happy to answer any questions that you have, and would just also like to take the opportunity to thank the Board for the flexibility that you afforded us last December, and the ability to get us on your agenda so quickly again for this evening. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just want to second the thank you. It's been a process, and we do appreciate your consideration.
As well as the permission of all of them who's not here this evening, but also worked with Mr. Canales and I offline to prepare the amendment and give us the feedback that we needed to be here tonight. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have anyone in the public who would like to speak, make comment for or against? The owners, perhaps? Okay, hearing. Matthew?
Thank you. I just wanted to echo, thank you for the consideration for today, and hopefully, we've ameliorated the concerns that were raised during the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else's hand up?
Nope, not seeing anybody else. Nope.
Okay, I move that we close the public portion of the meeting for deliberation. All those in favor?
Aye, Patrick.
Aye, Roxanne.
Aye, Chuck.
Okay. Well, I say considering that they basically have met the one obstacle here, and that is the height of the building, that we go ahead and we approve this modification.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye, Patrick.
Aye, Roxanne.
Aye, Chuck.
Thanks a lot. I'm reading.
Much. Let's hit the garage.
Okay, so, we're going to change the order a little bit here, and I don't have her
name, but we're going to have a discussion about the Campusa Bog MVP Statement of Interest. Would you like to make the introductions?
So, we're, yeah, we're going to be discussing the Campusa Bog, the MVP program, and our interests. I'm trying to see here if Allison Dixon is on yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. So, I guess we don't need to move forward. So, why don't we continue with the agenda?
All righty, so, we're going to jump back up to taking action on meeting minutes of October 14th, 2021, December 2nd, 2021, December 9th, 2021, and December 16th, 2021.
Motion to accept. Motion to approve.
As originally written?
I thought that Teresa did.
No, you suggested a change.
Yeah, so, if we're going to modify minutes after Teresa's created, no matter what minutes they are, it goes to the Board for a vote to modify. And then if the decision is to modify, then we'll move ahead with it. Or, in the future, we submit, when people are making presentations, submit what you're presenting, and then that gets attached as part of the minutes.
I certainly said my piece with regard to the residential exemption. I'm happy to make a motion to approve as written.
Okay. So, made a motion? I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, now, we have a couple of quick thank yous. So, we have a letter from the Selectmen to the Berkshire-Teconic Community Foundation. It is with appreciation that we acknowledge receipt of your check in the amount of $1,000 in lieu of real estate taxes for property located at 22 Nielsen Lane. Please accept our thanks on behalf of the residents of our community. Second one, to the Red Lion Inn. Rebecca's still here. The Stockbridge Council on Aging in the Town of Stockbridge, thank you for your generous donation of 90 lunch gift certificates for our seniors. Your commitment to helping the senior citizens in our community is sincerely appreciated. A special thanks to Tim Eustace and Carla Child for their assistance. Our seniors express their gratuity to the Red, express their
Ratitude.
Gratitude, it should be, to the Red Lion Inn and their staff for continuing to donate this special holiday gift. We all look forward to a time when our seniors can again lunch together in person at the Inn in the long-going, ongoing tradition set by Jane and Jack Fitzpatrick. Please accept our warmest heartfelt thanks on behalf of our senior residents, Stockbridge Board of Selectmen. Let me see. We have another thank you to make. We apparently received a $10,000 anonymous donation to the Ice Glen Project. So, whoever you are out there, thank you very much. It's a very generous donation.
Thank you.
And I've got a couple of other thank yous. One thing is that we've intended to thank, obviously, everyone who serves the community, and that's everyone who serves on a committee, a commission, all of our elected officials, obviously, and, I think very importantly, also, all of our employees for what a wonderful job that everyone has done in the past year in 2021. So, thank you, everyone. Know that you're all appreciated, and we're hoping that this will be a very good year in 2022. A couple other comments I want to make. I did hear that George Shippey died, passed away fairly recently. He served on the Select Board, and it's very sad to hear of his passing. And good news, Vernon Royce has just celebrated his 99th birthday. So, congratulations to Vernon, who also has served this town admirably. Do we still?
Just continue on with the agenda.
Just keep going?
Yep.
Okay. So, Glendale Fire Station pad installation discussion. Vinnie, would you like to come up?
Yes. So, Select Board and all citizens in attendance tonight, my name is Vincent J. Garofoli, Stockbridge Fire Chief, and I'm going to read a letter that I submitted to the Select Board and to the residents on November 23rd, 2021. Dear Town of Stockbridge, whom it may concern, the Stockbridge Fire Department would like to create a gravel parking area for an enclosed trailer next to the Glendale Fire Station. This gravel parking area would be located between the Glendale Fire Station and the paved driveway to the sewer pump station. The parking area would be the full width of the area between the driveway to the sewer pump station and the Glendale Fire Station, and would extend likewise from the rock wall near the flagpole to the back corner of the Glendale Fire Station. To create this parking area, we would replace one foot of vegetation and soil with a layer of road fabric covered with compressed gravel to original grade to achieve a hard and stable parking surface for the trailer. The enclosed trailer contains a Polaris Ranger UTV, a Honda ATV, and brush firefighting equipment. The UTV and ATV are used to aid in brush firefighting, search and rescue, and emergency services, patient extrication operations. Stockbridge Fire Department Truck 3, which towes this enclosed trailer, is stored in the Glendale Fire Station along with the Zodiac Rescue Boat and the Hose Roller Trailer. Parking the enclosed trailer at the same station as Truck 3 cuts down on valuable response time and unnecessary travel back and forth when emergency lights and sirens activated, making it safer for all of us. The Stockbridge Fire Department looked into several options before deciding on the proposed gravel parking area. Parking the enclosed trailer at one of the other two stations or any other town property, including the highway garage, adds extra response time by requiring Truck 3 to drive across town to get the enclosed trailer prior to responding to emergency calls. The extra response time could increase even more depending on the emergency call location in town and the current location of the responder going to retrieve Truck 3 at the time of the emergency call. We tried to see if the enclosed trailer would fit inside of Glendale Fire Station, and unfortunately, it does not because the driveway angle is too steep and the enclosed trailer is too tall to clear the garage door. Furthermore, even if Glendale Station could be altered to allow the enclosed trailer to clear the garage door, the carrying beam about halfway back is too low to allow the enclosed trailer to safely clear it and be disconnected from Truck 3. Also, while attempting to see if the enclosed trailer could fit inside, the Glendale Fire Station, it became very clear to us that trying to get the enclosed trailer lined up with the station in the first place was very complicated and could easily result in damage to the Glendale Fire Station, Truck 3, or the enclosed trailer due to reduced visibility and the angle needed to back it in safely. Lastly, we looked into moving other apparatus to the Glendale Fire Station and place the Truck 3, Zodiac Rescue Boat, and Hose Trailer, and the other apparatus are all too tall to fit and too heavy for the reinforced floor to hold. The conclusion was that for the foreseeable future, parking the trailer next to the Glendale Fire Station with Truck 3 and the other trailers is the most feasible, responsible, and convenient option to provide the best overall response for emergency calls for service in a timely and safe manner. The main project cost of $9,500 is being funded by the Stockbridge Fire Department Incorporated, which, for those that are unaware of what that actually is, that is the name of the association that supports the Stockbridge Fire Department. The remaining cost of installation of a manually-controlled timer light on the outside of the Glendale Fire Station and an exterior outlet located below the manually-controlled timer light would be paid for out of fiscal year 2022 Fire Department budget monies. The light will aid drug operator in seeing the trailer when hooking it up at night, and the outlet will be used to plug in the battery charger inside of the trailer. The manually-controlled timer light will only be activated from inside of the Glendale Fire Station when the trailer is being used in the dark, and it will turn off automatically after a maximum of 60 minutes. With this type of manually-controlled timer light, it is impossible to leave it on greater than 60 minutes at a time without manually resetting it to do so. Let it be known that the active members of the Stockbridge Fire Department unanimously support this project, and as it is currently proposed and asked, that I express this support to whom it may concern. Sincerely, Vincent J. Garofoli.
Okay, thank you, Vinnie. Any questions, Patrick?
No.
My, one comment, I have one or two comments. We know that there's some concern about how this will appear, and we do have some older shrubs that are in very bad shape, but I'm assuming that we are going to landscape to basically screen this from the road so that if, you know, there's no reason for anyone to be peering at this all day long. But basically, the shrubs that are there can be removed, and that we would landscape that adequately to actually screen that area from the road. Is that correct?
So, let me, I've been working with Administrator Canales on this and working with the neighborhood residents. Although, we have not been able to come to a total agreement that makes everybody extremely pleased with the project overall, we have come to some agreement and have made some concessions to help assist in aiding in visual blocking of this via natural vegetation. The natural vegetation that has been described is if you're facing the fire station, the right-hand side of the property, which is the property of 21 Glendale Road, because the fire station is 19. That's owned by Greenspan's, and that strip there along that right-of-way that was given to the sewer pump house, there's going to be a line of arborvitae, six-foot tall or so, arborvitae that go up to about the length of that rock wall where it comes down, so you can still see left or right when you come out to the end of the driveway. But it's not going to encroach in on your angle backing anything in, but it's going to visually screen the trailer, because the trailer's going to be set back behind that rock wall anyway. And the rock wall is actually about two feet above grade compared to the grade behind it. So, with the six-foot-tall vegetation that's there, it already shades the trailer visually from the street there. But my hope is that we can get somebody as an invasive species specialist to remove the Japanese knotweed that has taken over that garden, implant similar vegetation or something that's not going to encroach on the building and hold moisture, but still provide a screen all year round.
Okay, so, we're talking about both perpendicular to the road and also
In that garden itself.
And parallel to the road as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, parallel to the road is important for right across the street.
Correct.
So, I would say, why not arborvitae there also?
I think that's probably what we're going to go with, or something similar. It's going to be some type of vegetation that stays green all year round.
Maybe we can make it attractive, and my suggestion would be to run that by the various butters that have shown.
We actually did discuss this project, and the Greenspan's had indicated to us that they would be acceptable of the arborvitae along their property line. However, the McCormick's had expressed concern that even though we're doing some type of vegetation for screening, that they indicated it wouldn't be adequate for their liking. So, I don't know, no matter what vegetation we put there, that it's going to be adequate for their liking.
Right.
They were looking for a total gate of eight feet or higher across that whole area.
Well, we can't do that based on the bylaws, and then, and I've had this discussion with someone this morning, and also, that then impairs your ability to do a rapid response. The more you have to stop and open a gate, but the bottom line is, we can't put up an eight-foot gate anyway.
Correct, and it would bring up about more negatives than positives in terms of
Right.
snow removal, maintenance, et cetera.
Exactly. Patrick?
I think we should emphasize that over the last several years, we've had a number of significant droughts in this town, I mean, in this region. And I understand the concerns of the butters, but I believe that the chance of brush fires could easily expand into a really significant and uncontrollable event where so much of the brush near the roads, you know, abuts basically forest that goes all the way up the mountains. And giving these guys the ability to quickly access all the equipment they need to put out a brush fire quickly could forestall really disastrous catastrophic consequences for the town. And, you know, I think that it's important that we weigh the concerns of the butters, but, you know, we live in changing times, and, you know, allowing us to fight fires quickly and efficiently, especially brush fires, where they can so quickly turn into something else, I think is a really important goal that we should support.
I agree. Chuck, you have a question?
As long as we go through the proper channels, COMCOM and all that, and work on the screening, yeah.
Okay, Michael?
And as the chief said, you know, we're going to work on developing that plan for the spring, and we will include the neighbors in the discussion, limiting it to what we can do
Right.
as presented.
And I think that what's being proposed is, you know, perfectly reasonable in terms of screening. It's a piece of fire equipment. It is a firehouse. It is important for the general public good, and they do have to have rapid response. I think that the rationale behind this move makes lots of sense. So, well, I move that we go forward with this project. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have, before you leave, though.
Yes.
I have just a point of order. Is the corporation that is making this donation, is that a nonprofit? Is it a
Yeah, it's the 501(c)(3) nonprofit.
Do we have to vote to accept the gift?
Of the fire company?
Of this, of this non-governmental entity that's giving us the $9,500? I mean, I believe we have to vote to accept.
Yeah, I think we do.
Yeah.
And since this is
I make a motion, we accept the gift.
I'll second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate everything. And honestly, I think working together on this project actually helps to be a liaison between all the entities involved and the different boards, and it really opened up our eyes to how well all the departments can work together. So, thank you very much for all your assistance.
Right, thanks, Vinnie.
Have a good night.
You, too. Okay. Allison here yet?
Nope, so, what we'll do is I'll reach out, maybe change. We can get her, it's just an update on the culvert program, but let's go over the Campusa Bog. We
I can cover.
Patrick, do you want to start?
Sorry, do you?
Yeah.
I can start.
So, you probably know that Skyrun's, you know, have had some ongoing issues with the driveway, and Michael and I went over and visited with them to just sort of see what was going on. And there's been a significant rise in the water table that is due to some additional, I guess the beavers are, you know, are opportunistic, and with all the rain we got last year, then we had beavers come in and blah, blah, blah. Long story short, we went and met with them, and then we had a separate discussion with Jess and Allison Dixon from HVA. And we're going to try to work with NHESP to put in an emergency beaver deceiver that they're going to fund, I believe, or at least Jess believes they will fund, to try to immediately deal with kind of the really incredibly high water level there that is threatening the bog. But then we got into a larger discussion about, about the Campusa stewardship, you know, committee that Judy Spencer used to run before she passed away, and really how we kind of lost track of Campusa over the last decade or so with the sort of, you know, generational change that we had here. And Jess and, and I believe NHESP have talked about the need for a hydrology study, which is quite expensive. It's $75,000 to $100,000. Michael and I have talked about funding that through any one of a combination of potentially some CPC money, potentially some NHESP money, applying for an MVP grant, and/or, you know, an article in the town warrant. But Jess feels like the updated hydrology study is probably the most important thing that we need to deal with. Now, separate from that, you know, the state has made a presentation to COMCOM to manage the invasive species, three issues, Campusa invasive species, salt from the roads, and the high-water table. And so, you know, the, you know, the state came in with a proposal to basically burn the fragmites, and that's proceeding, you know, hopefully this summer, I think COVID last year delayed it somewhat. And then the third thing is, Michael and I, we're going to follow up and confirm that the state was to put in place certain procedures to minimize salt in that area, to just confirm that they're still following those, because, once again, it's been like a decade since they put it in place, and just would turn over and stuff. We're not sure of it. So, you know, obviously, our path of funding of last resort will be the town warrant, but if we, you know, we thought we would apply for money from these other sources to try to get the whole Campusa stewardship project back on track.
Okay. Well, my understanding didn't, isn't there a statement of interest, the MVP program?
Right, and that's one of the things that, as I hear, is that the Board support submitting a statement of interest to do a hydrology study on Campusa Bog.
Right.
To do the evaluation of Ice Glen, and do a forest
Right.
This could potentially be covered by MVP funds.
Right, so, we'd like to put expressive interest for all three of those, if the Board so supports.
And they're all kind of, they're highly competitive, so I don't think we should, you know, be too optimistic, but the thing that we have going for us is, especially at Campusa, it is such a rare, it is the only basin, calcareous fen in the state, and clearly, the water from last summer is having a terrible impact on it, and we can really make a good climate argument that stewarding this is going to take, you know, a new approach, new resources, and new studies, and that's what we're looking at. The other, the other part of the grant that we're going to look at is, there's a lot of records in people's basements here at the Land Trust, and we want to, you know, have as part of this grant request, a consolidation of those records and a digitization of that archive so that we know, because there's tremendous amount of work that was done over the last two and a half decades related to Campusa, but it's at risk of being lost because, you know, it's all paper copies all over town, and we want to kind of really, you know, revitalize the effort to steward the bog and make sure that this really rare resource is protected.
Okay. Well, certainly makes sense. I wasn't aware that we have paperwork all over town in people's basements.
We did. I didn't. It was, it was a surprise, so.
I don't know, you got any questions, Chuck?
Nope. I see a Campusa Bog all the time. I'm a butter.
So, I mean, I have, you know, obviously, I would certainly support a hydrology study of Campusa Bog, and I think that, yeah, certainly, like, go after it. If we can, you know, do something and get some MVP funds, we might as well apply and give it a shot, so I would
So, we have a draft that I've been working on with Allison, and we'll go over that with Michael and try to get with Michael and try to get the early expression of interest, which they highly recommend is, I believe, due January 21st. And then the final, they moved up the date of the final to February 1st.
I saw that.
Yeah. So, you know, we'll be, we'll get it in. It's not hard.
Okay. So you're in the process of working on this?
In the process. Yep.
All right. Well, I move that we, as a Board, support this effort.
Thank you.
As described. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I can aye as a butter. Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Good.
All right. We're in agreement. And then I think, Michael, you're going to give an update on the Larry Wog Bridge. We're just going to...
So just, so, so we have identified, I had the email up a second ago. Let me call it back up, the trunk. So we have the punch list items that will need to be completed on the Larry Wog Bridge. And it's, you know, I'll send around the report that we get, and you'll see where there's some places where there is some water that's come through and some areas where they'll be required to put some joint, basically a proved corrective procedure that Mass DOT will require. Some, you know, just some scouring on the cement and stuff that makes the bridge, you know, it'll get cleaned up in the spring. But a lot of this would have been work that we probably wouldn't have even had on the punch list if it wasn't that the whole project got delayed into winter, where some of these things, they usually take like an acid sort of rub that you clean up the cement to make it look as nice as it can when it first gets done. There were some pieces in the cement where there's some cracks, just surface level. You know, we're not talking structural issues, but just more cosmetic things that'll be cleaned up so the bridge will be in its best shape. So our engineers have gone through, we've looked at it. And then, of course, they only were able to do a binder coat before the colder weather set in. So the final top coat and then black topping the bridge and all the way to 102 will take place in the spring. So there'll probably be a couple days in the spring where we will have to, potentially, we'll have to close the bridge for a couple days in order to do that type of work and get it cleaned up. And there might be a longer period where one lane or the other needs to be as they work on cleaning up some of these punch list items. Overall, very pleased with the progress. And Maximilian did a great job despite some really difficult conditions as far as the water levels in the stream. Of all the years to be trying to work in the stream to have record rainfall, and we lost a good month of work due to the high water level, which just, there was a period there, I think it was 17 days, it was above the high watermark. So it was like, okay, that, you know, that wasn't good. So, but overall, they did a great job in getting us to this point and getting the bridge open for the winter season. And then, like I said, there'll be a couple delays in the spring as we finish this project up, and then it'll be fully complete.
Right. And I don't anticipate that we're going to have the same kind of delays that we had this past year. But just for the public's knowledge, I mean, this has been pushed out because of the rain. And then it was pushed to the end of November it was supposed to be done, and then ultimately opened December 17th. But the final problem was supply chain problems. And that was, we had guardrails that just didn't get here because of basic federal, you know, across the nation, supply chain problems. So that's what that last final delay was about, if anyone, anybody is questioning that. But I don't, I'm assuming that we're talking a really short period of time to finalize everything.
And everything that's being done now is out of the water. So it's not really dependent on that. It'll just be some of those places, that punch list items, and then the final top coat, black top, in pain.
All right. Thank you. So I think we've covered everything. Do we have any questions or comments from the public at this point in time? No?
Nope.
All right. Hearing none. I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
All right.